If we could take our seats. We're about ready to start. But it's so nice, there's just lots of dynamic conversation going on. It's great. Usually, there's a space for some dad jokes, which we never tell, but. The August 1st, 2024 Des Moines City Council Study Session is now called to order. Next is up the Pledge Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let the record show that all council members are present. Do we have any correspondence not previously received by the council?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. It's now time for comments from the public. And because this is a study session, hearing comments that address the items on the agenda only tonight. So other subjects may be heard at our next regular meeting. We ask that you keep your comments respectful. Please recognize that any person speaking or acting in a disruptive manner will be asked to leave the meeting. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and the city of your residence. No one has signed up to speak tonight, so I will ask that, is there anyone who came to speak tonight for public comment but didn't realize they needed to sign up in order to do that? Okay, it looks like we do have one. Come on up to the podium, state your name, where you reside, and you'll have three minutes. That's all right. That's all right. All good. Take a deep breath. You'll be good.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Jenny Russo. I'm from Des Moines. I am here to ask that you guys put on the legislating note to protect our green space wetlands. I am here speaking about this because, as a community, we just found about it recently, as we are aware. And I am asking that, because of the resident survey that you guys recently did, the number one thing on there was protecting our green space. And so, again, I'm asking, please save our wetlands. With that, I have been advised that the person who, maybe, okay, this is no longer part of the city, just kind of throwing it out there a touch, but again, protecting our wildlife and our green space is very important to me. Once I heard about this, I went out to the community. You guys may have even seen me at farmer's markets. You may have heard about me. I've been out there making some noise, and the residents would like here at least be heard. And so, I'm asking that you guys put on the legislative note to please protect our green space/wetlands. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Do we need to write that down on the sheet? Did you got it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right. That's good for public comments. Next up, we have discussion items. We're going to begin with emerging issues. And the first item on the emerging issues is Port of Seattle Part 150 Study Presentation. And our presenter will be Tim Fagerstrom, Senior Environmental Program Manager, Noise Programs. For the port, he will be accompanied by the head of our Noise Program Office, Ryan McMullin, Senior Manager, Aviation Noise Programs. Thank you.
Thank you for having me tonight to talk about our latest Part 150 Noise and Land Use Compatibility Study Update at our airport. I'm Tom Fagerstrom. I'm with the Noise Programs Office with the Port of Seattle. I'm a program manager there. I've been with the Port of Seattle for 18 years, so this will be my second Part 150. More about, a little bit more about history as we go. Our agenda for my discussion here tonight will be some basic elements of what a Part 150 noise study is. I'll go over a little bit of brief history about Part 150 at our airport and some of the study outcomes from those previous. And I'll talk about our status of our new Part 150 Study Update that we just began this year. And then we'll have time for discussion. So some basics about what a Part 150 is, and I'll go into each of these in a little bit more detail as we go along. But Code of Federal Regulations 14 is what deals with aviation. Part 150 is the part of that regulation that guides airports on how to assess noise impacts. So that's why it's called a Part 150. And it's under FAA rules and guidelines, and that's what we have to follow as we follow the course of this multi-year study update. We must follow those guidelines in order to obtain airport improvement grant funding for sound insulation and other noise abatement projects that may result from the study. Part 150 is focused on airport noise and land use incompatibilities within a 65 decibel day/night level contour. 65 DNL is the standard that we must adhere to with a Part 150. It's, I'll go a little bit more about what DNL is. It's an annual average of noise, 65 is the level that the FAA deems as impacted. And will result in updated 65 DNL noise contours. That's the required outcome of a Part 150. There can be other measures as well, but in its very essence, we need updated noise contours. And that will in turn update our noise remedy boundary that's in place currently today. FAA-approved mitigation measures will become eligible for AIP funding at 80%. So that's how much the FAA will fund these programs that they deem eligible. I like this slide because it just shows the basic steps and phases of a Part 150. There are basically two main phases of a Part 150 noise study. And we have just begun the first phase, which is the noise exposure maps phase. We kicked it off with some study workshops, public workshops that we held in early June. I'll talk more about those. And we've got our study, detailed study design developed and approved by the FAA. And now, after we've kicked it off in a public way, we will begin what we call the inventory process, where we will start to gather all of the information that's pertinent to the airport, whether it's aircraft operational information, like operational levels, runway use, aircraft fleet mix. We'll develop a detailed air traffic forecast for future years. And then we'll also be looking at land uses within the local communities. And that's where we'll need the help of the local cities to guide and make sure that we are on the right course, because we need to know the land uses, we need to know what's happening within that future updated noise contour. So that's all that inventory work that's going to start to take place. Actually, it has begun, and will take place through the rest of the year. And then, early next year, I'll get into scheduling as well, but we'll eventually go to the aviation noise modeling portion, where all of those inputs are put into a sophisticated noise modeling program. And then, we eventually have our noise exposure analysis, in other words, our contours. And then those need to be approved by the FAA. At this point, we'll go back out to the community for more public workshops, just as we just completed in June, before we go into the second phase of a Part 150, which is the noise compatibility program phase. And that's where we will essentially, what can the airport do? Now that we know the impacts, we know the impacted areas, what can the airport do to improve those impacts? And so, we'll talk noise abatement alternatives. Basically, what can we do at the source of the noise with the aircraft? Can the aircraft be doing something different with takeoff procedures, landing procedures? Can they be doing something different while on the ground at our airport? Land use alternatives, which basically amounts to sound insulation programs, or potentially acquisition programs. These are all things that would be on the table, not necessarily apply to our airport, but acquisition programs, sound insulation programs, land use alternatives there. And then programmatic alternatives. We'll look at everything that, every aspect of our noise programs to see if there's ways to improve. And we come out of that with a noise compatibility program. That also needs to be approved by the FAA, another round of public meetings, and then we'll have eventually FAA approval of a final document. So we'll have engagement all throughout this process, multi-year process. So, a little bit more about the DNL noise contour. DNL stands for day/night average level noise. It's an annual average of noise from aircraft operating SCA with a weighted nighttime penalty. Nighttime noise is counted in the calculation of DNL at a rate 10 times greater than daytime noise. 65 DNL is the FAA-required metric. We have to use it. We acknowledge that the FAA is currently undergoing a noise policy review. We don't have any idea what the outcome of that will be, nor the timeframe of any outcomes. They're looking at DNL, whether it's the proper metric, and 65 is the proper number. So that is ongoing, but we do need to update our contours. We've had a lot of extra increases in operations over the years, and so we've got to make sure that we have an accurate noise contour that reflects what's happening at our airport today. So we are monitoring that FAA effort there. Contours produced have to be done using an aircraft modeling program called the Aviation, should be Aviation Environmental Design Tool, not aircraft, Aviation Environmental Design Tool, AEDT. And that must be used when developing the 65 DNL noise contour. Noise monitoring data is, the FAA does not allow it to be used for this purpose. So for Part 150, we will look at a current year and a future five-year noise impacts. On our last Part 150, we used 2013 as our base year, 2018 was our future year, and that's reflected in that image there. That was our 2018 noise contour that was the basis for the current noise remedy boundary. We will use a future year, again, to base, as the basis of an updated noise remedy boundary. We anticipate using the years 2025 and 2030 will be our future noise year. That could change, but that's our intention right now. And then we'll be using a future forecasted operations level in 2030 as the basis for that future five-year contour. So just getting into some basic concepts here. So I talked about noise modeling, and why is noise modeling the preferred method? Why does it, why does the FAA prefer it? It does have some advantages. Calculating noise exposure, using noise modeling, you can calculate noise exposure on any point on a map. And that's the great advantage of it. You can go to any street corner, any point, and know what the noise exposure is based on the output of this AEDT model. Depicting annual aircraft noise exposure, of course, but it's really good for predicting future aircraft noise exposure. You can really, you can feed all sorts of future data into a model to see what will happen with a 5% increase in operations, a 10% increase in operations. Whatever is the case, it is a very flexible format. You can assess changes from different things happening on the airfield, such as runway use. If, over the course of a year, and you're using that data, say, a runway was closed for a month, well, that causes other runways to get used more. That can be programmed into a model to accurately reflect those changes. It also makes it easy to assess changes in fleet mix or number of operations. Say, we get into a future 2030 contour, and we find out that Delta Airlines, all of a sudden, decides they're going to retire all of their older Boeing 757s. Well, that, then we have to go back and redo the fleet, and that's easy to do with a noise modeling program. So, and it also is handy to evaluate operational procedures. Like I say, if there is a different way that aircraft could be approaching or taking off from the runways, there are two main ways that aircraft, two different types of departure profiles, for instance. If we model it using a, one type of profile versus another, it'll show in the noise modeling where that benefit may be. So, just a few things about modeling. And with the modeling inputs, the amount of noise exposure can be determined by aircraft type, stage length, that's another interesting aspect of noise modeling. Stage length simply means the distance of the flight. For instance, a 737-800 leaving here and flying to Los Angeles versus a 737-800 leaving here and flying to Miami. The aircraft flying to Miami is going to be far heavier because of all the extra fuel. Likely, that aircraft is going to take off and be a bit noisier because of its extra weight. So all those stage lengths that are programmed into the modeling as well, to really get an accurate reflection of noise impacts. Average number of daily operations, I mentioned the nighttime waiting. And then, when we look at noise exposure, how is it distributed out into the community? Well, that's really where runway use comes into play. Flight path locations and flight path usage levels. We know that a flight, an arrival flight path to the third runway is going to be a lot more common than a flight path to the center runway. And that's factored into the modeling. That path to the third runway is going to be busier. And that's, so, these are all advantages of the model. Weather inputs are also inputted into the noise modeling program, too. So it's pretty sophisticated. So I mentioned past Part 150s, and this is just a short little look. Our initial Part 150 was done in 1985, and that's when that original boundary was established. That was in place for a long time here. We had study updates done in 1992. The 1992 study was updated there quickly because airspace changes. The FAA instituted what's called a four-post plan, and then a Part 150 was done soon after that to see if there were any impacts to the contour. And then, after that, 2002 was when the next Part 150 ended. The boundary stayed in place after the 2002 Part 150, even though the contour did shrink a bit. We were able to keep that larger boundary in place. And then 2014, we had to update the boundary, and then it did shrink significantly to the current boundary today. And we will be updating the boundary again for this new Part 150. And I stress again, extensive public involvement is essential, it's required by the FAA, and it will continue. So I just want to keep on that point as well. I mentioned land use planning. It's very crucial with, within Part 150. We are going to identify noise incompatibilities within the surrounding communities. The FAA deems noise levels that are below 65 DNL as compatible. All land uses are compatible with noise levels that are below 65 DNL. However, if noise levels are shown to be above 65, then we have what the FAA deems as incompatible land uses with those noise levels. And those are, include residential, of course, schools, places of worship, hospitals, nursing homes, and some daycare facilities, would all be potentially eligible for some form of sound insulation if they were, unless they were new builds. I will say that. And so with land use planning, we'll have an opportunity to evaluate potential new noise mitigation initiatives. Is there a way that our sound installation programs can be improved? We'll evaluate ongoing programs from past Part 150 studies. There's always an opportunity to do that. Is there something that we can include in our residential sound installation program that we're not now? Can we improve our fly-quiet program? That would be something more at the aircraft source of noise. The record of approval is what comes at the end of the study, and this is where the FAA approves, disapproves, or gives no action for what is being put forth. The FAA is pretty strict about that they will only approve a mitigation strategy if it shows a benefit within the 65 DNL contour. Otherwise, they probably will not approve it. So just a few examples of noise mitigation strategies, initiatives can end up in a record of approval, of course, an updated noise remedy boundary, continuation of or establishment of new sound installation programs. And this goes with, you know, once we do an inventory of what's going on in the local, maybe we will find out that there is a new daycare facility that we didn't know previously, and that now becomes eligible. There's a new place of worship, these sorts of things, once we get an updated look at the local inventory of land uses. Continuation of our aircraft maintenance nighttime run-up restrictions. I just put that in there because it's such a successful program at our airport. We've had it for a long time, and we want to keep that going. Run-ups are restricted to two minutes after 10:00 p.m., and that's a very successful program, so we want to keep that going. Continuation of the fly-quiet program, and monitoring noise abatement procedures, which is what we do on a regular, daily, weekly, monthly basis. Maybe there's improvements that we can do with those. Evaluate our noise monitoring system. Maybe there are locations for our permanent monitors that are better suited than our current locations. We'll have an evaluation done of that. And again, there are a number of things. I can't really predict the outcome. We're a ways off from this stage, but perhaps there's a structure that we can build on the airfield that would shield noise from closing communities. Maybe there's an approach procedure that would provide benefit to the 65 that we're not considering yet. This is where we're going to count on our noise consultant team that we brought on board to help us look out of the box a bit. And this is where I talk about our new Part 150 Study Update, give you a bit of a look at where we, what we've done so far and where we are going. I mentioned the consulting firm Environmental Science Associates, ESA, is helping to lead the study. They do all the technical work with developing the contours. They take all the inputs, what all the aircraft are doing, and put, input those into the modeling program. So they do all that work. They also lead our large public workshops, and we've already done a few of those. As I mentioned, public outreach efforts are underway. Those really got underway in May in anticipation of our workshops that were completed in early June. I should have had a slide talking about our technical review committee, because that's an important body that's going to meet probably about three times a year. We had our first initial meeting in June, kind of introductory. The technical review committee kind of is an observer of the process, and all the cities have representatives that are part of the TRC. Most of them are planners. I know that for the city of Des Moines, we have Jason Woike. I hope I'm saying that name right. He's a planner that is on our TRC. And to help guide, particularly in the early stages, I keep talking about the local land use inventory, so he'll be a great assistance with that. And that's the way the other cities are represented as well. We'll also have the FAA, Delta Airlines, Alaska Airlines, also at that TRC. And they will help when we start gathering all of those aircraft operations inputs to make sure that we are not missing something. So that, basically, it's, the technical review committee is kind of an observer group. And so, we will probably meet again in October to talk about where that data gathering is at that time. So, yeah, technical review committee, important. And the data collection, as I continue to say, is underway. And I mentioned our study workshops, kickoff workshops. We had three of them, June 5th, 6th, and 8th. They were all had about the same number of attendees. I think the June 6th in Des Moines had narrowly the most. And I understand there was a council meeting that night. So somewhat apologies for that. We had trouble getting Mount Rainier High School. It was trouble getting that facility, and we really wanted that beautiful facility there, and it was available that night, so we grabbed it. But, so a total of about 150 attendees for the three. It was open-house format, so there were stations that folks could walk around, get information about what particular aspect of the study they were interested in. We had port staff and consultant team on hand to provide that information, answer questions. And I think it went quite well. I think everybody that attended, if they wanted their concerns heard, had them heard, and if they had questions, that we gave them the best answers that we possibly could. So I think it was successful in that sense. The concerns heard were not surprising. Increases in operations, of course, is on everybody's mind at our airport. Nighttime noise, definitely a concern, those wake-ups at night, runway usage, and issues related to the sound insulation programs. I'll say, at our kickoff meetings, we did have stations devoted to our repair and replacement pilot program, because we know that's in the top of people's minds right now with the installation, secondary sound installation assessment going on. So we did have, it's not related to Part 150, but we did have folks on hand to answer those questions. We also had folks on hand to answer questions about our sustainable airport master plan, even though that's also not related to Part 150. But we know those are programs that have questions, people have questions about. So continuing study engagement, that's going to go on through the entire duration of the study. Briefings and formal meetings, such as what I'm doing tonight qualifies for that. Our public involvement plan includes outreach to some harder, hard-to-reach local communities. We've had some really interesting interviews with some community-based organizations in the local area about strategies for reaching those folks that don't, we don't ordinarily hear from. You know, we hear from the community through our complaints, we hear from community at public meetings, but there are certain communities that are maybe a little hesitant to go to a Port of Seattle meeting, not quite trusting in that process. So we want to reach out to those communities. We know there's noise issues out there. We want to hear from everybody that has any issues, anything they want to share with us, or ideas, too. We also will be on hand with informational tables at local events. There's various of those this summer. Ryan was at one last night at the Sea-Tac Summer Market, talking about Part 150. Later this month, I will be at the Des Moines Waterfront Farmer's Market, talking about Part 150. So there will be various table events where we'll have staff on hand to talk about Part 150 if they want to. We've got a comprehensive study website that has all of the materials from our workshops, including all the comments we've received at the workshops. Great common questions and answers there. And there's a way to submit comments directly to the study team through that site there. It's, that's a link, but it's sca-part150.com is the website. And we have an email address if you want to reach port staff, if you have any basic Part 150 questions there. You've got the address there to reach port staff, which would be me. And last slide, just a quick look at our schedule for Part 150. We're in the data collection phase right now. Public outreach says summer/fall 2024, but it really just is continuous. The noise modeling, once those inputs are all gathered by our consultant, that will begin really early 2025, before the summer. That's certainly our intention, anyway. And the noise exposure map report after, that'll come out after our next round of public workshops. That will be later in 2025 for FAA acceptance, and then we move into the next phase. And we'll start to look at noise abatement alternatives, and that's after a lot of public input. And I look at the contours, the new updated contours. We'll have a noise compatibility report by late '25 or so. Public hearings, which will wrap up the study somewhere around 2026 or so. And that, and then a final report into the FAA Record of Approval after their lengthy review sometime in 2027, likely. And then we'll have an updated contour. And I believe that is my last slide, and we can have any questions or discussions you may have.
Counsel, any questions? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah, thank you very much. That's, it's very helpful and a lot of good process going on, and I appreciate seeing that. And I understand the advantages of modeling, but modeling's only as good as the input that you're basing the model on. And I noticed the input, the modeling inputs that you listed, the aircraft type. So is there a baseline for each kind of aircraft, any particular part of the flight that's being used? And if so, who provided those, that baseline level of noise by that aircraft?
Well, it comes from the FAA's noise certification data for each aircraft type and each engine type on each aircraft. And each aircraft have different engine types as well, so they do have certification data for each aircraft. How they judge how loud a 737-800 is at, you know, 2,500 feet, I don't have that. I don't know. I don't know. The model is continuously updated and improved and reviewed, not just by FAA, but a lot of industry folks. It's, there's a lot of hands in that pot, that aviation environmental design tool. But that is where they get the aircraft noise data, is from the FAA's own certification records.
And is that provided by the manufacturer?
The FAA does that themselves.
And the engine? The FAA actually sits out there with the...
That is one way that the FAA does use monitors, noise monitors, is when they certify an aircraft. They will actually stick microphones out back of it and develop their certification standards.
Okay. Do you know what the science was behind the 65 decibel level on an annual average? How did that come about?
Yeah, that is a windy road. And it goes back to annoyance curves that date back to the 70s. It was used in, it's used in transportation, not just aviation. It's used in other things besides aviation. It's a standard in many different modes of transportation. I'm not going to be able to recite the history of it, but it's been in place for decades.
You indicated that there is some current study going on that's going to look at both the 65 and the annual, whether an annual average is appropriate or not.
Yes.
While you're building your maps, are you going to take into consideration the ability to expand or contract the map based upon the finding that might come down the road?
It is definitely on our minds, yes. And all the way from the point that we were choosing a consulting firm, one of the questions we asked them was, the noise policy review is coming. How flexible are you going to be able to be? And they are going to be able to handle it. We're building some contingencies into our scope to handle that. Now, what will be the FAA's guidance? When they, if, when or if they do come out with a new standard, we have no idea. We are in uncharted territory. It's never happened before where they've changed the standard. Since the start of Part 150, it's never changed. So we'll have to wait and see. But we are planning on trying, on being flexible. It won't throw us off too much, but we have to wait and see what's going to happen.
Is that the annual average used in other transportation modeling as well? Or is that unique to aircraft?
I believe it's used in other transportation as well. And exactly which ones, I'm not sure.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Tom. So you said the study design is complete? Is that a public document at this point or for internal use?
Our scope is approved by the FAA, and that just is basically from the standpoint of how many public meetings we plan on, a wide range of how many public events we may have. But yes, it is.
No, I mean, like, you know, where you've set up, you know, microphones and, you know, just the baseline of inputs before you...
Well, AEDT will do the contour work. If we are planning on doing some short-term noise monitoring, and that's built into the scope, but we don't know where we're going to put that out to the community. We'll, I have a couple places I'd love to place a temporary noise monitor. But those are the type of things that are in the scope, in the community.
Please. Where would you, if you were...
Generally, in areas west of the runways.
Okay. So let's see, two other, I guess, real quick things. So each Part 150 has been just dramatically different in terms of, you know, just because technology change and everything. This is just my rhetorical suggestion. Because the model is so detailed, the only thing we see is either the giant red ellipse or the giant blue ellipse, right? I mean, basically, it shrunk, and then it was bigger. But it should be possible to provide a dashboard that says, like, almost down to this, no, not almost, but to the street level, that says that, you know, this address is 66 and that address is 71. It won't make a darn bit of difference in terms of sound insulation or whatever, but I think that would be a nice thing to have.
We can do the contour in one-decibel increments and show the lines. You know, this is where 65 is, this is 66, 67, 68. So we can do that.
No, I'm not saying in terms of the boundary. I'm saying, like, the public, you know, they think they're losing it, but it's just a fact that you move one block, you know, east-west or north-south, and the noise profile changes. I mean, it won't make a darn bit of difference whether you get a, but I think having that ability to zoom in, like with a parcel viewer or, you know, some kind of thing, would just make people feel like they're not, you know...
Sort of a GIS mapping tool.
Yeah. Yeah. And just finally, and also being rhetorical, if this were in 1993, you'd have like 1,000 people here, like with torches and, you know. And so your, and your outreach has been, like, really good. I mean, there are still, like, there used to be 125 homes that were eligible, and now there's, I don't know, 40 or something. But, you're the, but the point I'm trying to make is that over time, people became inured, kind of. I mean, people moved out. And I talk to people all the time where they're like the third homeowner with the port package, or there's the one home that didn't get it, and they speak Vietnamese, and they don't even know to ask for it. So just, you know, you are pretty sensitive about it, but just that outreach is really important. And it's not that people are any less concerned, it's just that they just got, they just, like, basically got so beaten down with a third runway that they just now are like, well, I guess this is the way it is. And so to the extent that you have to do the outreach because they just are kind of like checked out. And so thank you for, to the extent that you guys can, you know, keep at that. It's, yeah, that's it.
Other questions? Okay, Councilmember Mahoney?
So on the modeling inputs, you know, obviously, frequency continues to grow. There's windows of time. You talk about averages of the day operation.
Yeah.
But would this study be able to determine, like, from 4:00 to 8:00, it can be hell, right? And it's way different than it might be at a different time during the day. So my concern is they're not catching the sustained noise levels in a couple windows. Is that going to be addressed at all?
Well, it is baked into, the consultant is getting all of our flight track data. And all of that flight track data has timestamps. So it knows, it reflects the busy times of the day, for sure. Those times of the day where it is every minute and a half, you know, takeoffs, every minute and a half landings. So that'll be reflected in that because that's what's in the data. The noise modeling inputs is based on actual, actual operations are being fed into that model. So those intense times will be baked in to the results.
Okay, yeah. Obviously, my concern is catching those that are far more egregious than the norm. And I think it's important because it is a different, you know, experience than, say, you know, 4:00 in the morning or something like that.
Yeah.
And I think they're a little more frequent than one minute or one and a half at those times, from what I've seen.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
With more than one runway.
Yes.
Operating, yeah. Yeah.
Councilmember Grace Motsui?
Yeah, and in addition to Councilmember Mahoney's question, I think one of the things that I'm hearing him say is that if there is, if there are peak time periods, let's say between 9:00 AM and 11:00 PM, that greatly increase the decibel level because of the frequency, the amount of traffic, the types of aircraft, all those things in the model that we've talked about, then having a protected, quiet time would bring down the average for the entire day. So where are we in ensuring that those protected, quiet hours are being enforced?
Well, I guess the closest we come to that is what we're trying to do with the late-night noise limitation program and trying to encourage carriers against operating between midnight and 5:00. So that's the closest that we can come, and that's pushing the limits of our authority is basically, I don't want to, basically nagging the airlines on a quarterly basis about maybe some noise exceedances that they're having in those hours, and letting them know about their operations numbers. And we come at them with a suggestion or the ask that maybe you consider a schedule change or a quieter aircraft, which has had some success. But that's as close as we've come to sort of having that sort of quiet time.
Right. So nagging is great. Is there an enforcement aspect, or there's any incentive for them to comply with those suggestions?
We cannot by federal legislation punish an airline for being too loud or too, as long as they're operating an aircraft that's certified to fly commercially at our airport, and that's the federal standard. We do not have the authority to impose a punishment. We also can't reward, conversely, a quiet airline with anything tangible other than a public pat on the back.
And the last question I have is, you talked about potential future noise monitoring systems, and Councilmember Harris talked about the possibility of citing them closer. What is the closest noise monitoring system to the city of Des Moines?
There are, oh, I hope I get this right. I think there are three of them in the city of Des Moines. One not far from here, in a right-of-way, in a neighborhood. So, yeah, I mean, there are some out there noise monitors that are placed in locations that made sense 25 years ago when they were placed that don't make as much sense now. So, yeah, there can be, I think there could be some opportunities to move some permanent monitors around. And not that this is a big determinant, but the FAA will fund a noise monitor placement as long as it's in the 65 DNL contour. We'll do it whether it's in or not. We'll move a monitor, but that's just a Part 150 policy thing, sure.
Councilmember Oxiger?
Yes, thank you. Are we, are you also looking at cumulative effect?
The what effect, I'm sorry?
Cumulative, as far as noise?
In what sense? I mean...
Well, if you're, if somebody is at the 64% decibel level for 24 hours a day, I mean, that can have a different effect on people that are experiencing, you know, rises and falls. So is there any attempt to study cumulative effect?
You mean as far as health studies or things of that nature?
I assume a health study could come out of that.
There are a lot of health studies. This is, that would be outside of Part 150, but there are lots of health studies out there about cumulative effects of noise, sleep deprivation, heart health, and so forth. Within Part 150, we, this is the, sort of the strict nature of it. It's 65 DNL. And that's really where the, you know, analysis for Part 150 in the strictest sense stops.
Well, okay, but you're providing the data as far as that, for example, a health study would be accessing, right? In order to...
Sure.
So, so I would assume that if they're studying, you know, what the overall effects are, that it would be helpful to have a cumulative effect and have, you know, data showing that, okay, for this particular area and stuff, it's the noise, you know, levels are at near excessive levels for an extended period of time. So...
And there could be other noise metrics that could assist it with that, too. And above, or time above, these noise metrics that set a noise level and then inform you how often an aircraft exceeds that in a 24-hour day. That could be illuminating for the type, I think what I'm hearing, the type of analysis you want to see. There could be, there is a space in Part 150 for alternate analyses. It can be in the appendix portion of a Part 150. So, you know, there will be some alternate metrics being used. I think I understand what you're saying now. That could be in the appendix portion. It wouldn't be in the portion that the FAA approves or disapproves, but it can be part of our analysis. So that's, I understand.
I would think that would be beneficial.
Okay.
And one other question. How large is your program? How many people do you have in your program?
In...
The noise program.
Noise Program Office.
Working on this.
Right, work? Oh, well, there are eight of us, counting Ryan, myself. There are three of us working on Part 150.
Okay. I'm not interested in specific addresses or anything, but how many of you live within the current contours?
Not me. I don't know.
But there's data, and then there's real-life experience, is my point. So it'd be interesting to know, you know, people that are doing the studying, do they have direct knowledge or direct experience with the, what it's like to live, you know, within the contours?
I have in the past. I've worked at Sea-Tac since 1995. I've lived all over the region. I have in the past, but I don't currently.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Harris, second time.
Well, since this is a study session, it's not really a, but to your point, Councilmember Oxiger, the whole DNL 65, the term of art is annoyance, and that should tell you right there how the scientific community views noise. And unfortunately, the health impacts, you can find tons of people in Des Moines, including some of our predecessors, who love the sound of jet aircraft in the morning. And people will just swear. They enjoy, they enjoy hearing the sounds. Your body does not care whether you enjoy this stuff or not. And unfortunately, the health impacts are completely counterintuitive to one's personal enjoyment. And so you, the DNL 65, it does not truthfully take into account, you can have one flight at 2:30 that, you know, has the same kind of, or the suggestion is that it has the same kind of negative health impact. Or you can have this long string of those jets coming every 45 seconds. But over time, they're doing something to your body that's not good on any number of levels. And so I just, the notion of personal empathy and all of that, I take your point, but I, it really is irrelevant to the study, the health impacts. And I try to go easy on Tom and all of his people because Part 150, I look at it like the tax code. They are complying with regulations, and health has got, is simply not part of the equation. It's up to us as a city and other agencies to put that on the table, but it's just, you know, they are diligently following FAA regs as they are. But, you know, they're not sufficient at all to address the health issues, but I'm never gonna beat on the pork for simply following the law as it stands. No, I mean, I mean, that's it. You know, it's up to, it's up to us and them to try to improve the situation. But Part 150 unfortunately just is not about, about health. And there are monitors in the area 12th, 226th, 207th, and Des Moines Memorial Drive. They're, they're capturing all of the stuff. It's just getting people away from that notion of like, well, the planes don't bother me at all, because all that does is it creates a self-sorting, and I promise I'm almost done. But basically what it does is people who are bothered, the, the, the thing you hear from people is, don't like it, move. Well, whether you like it or not, it's hurting your body over time, and somehow we have to move that discussion in that direction and away from personal preference. That's it.
Any other questions, comments? I have a few. So just for the sake of people that maybe this could be their first exposure to this or still kind of trying to line it up in their mind, would you say, to summarize the purpose of the 150 study is to establish DNL contours?
That is-
Right? And that the importance of establishing a DNL contour is there's mitigation available inside the contour and there's not mitigation outside the contour?
That is a, a accurate summa, summation, yes.
Okay.
There's opportunities to do things outside to-
Okay.
But yes.
But there's a, a, an importance of establishing a contour, we wouldn't be spending all the time on it, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you talked about opportunities, mitigation opportunities and acquisition opportunities. You did mention that, but are there still acquisition opportunities inside the DNL in Des Moines? At Des Moines slash Puri and CTEC? No, the, this, this particular contour, no acquisition, okay? In, you might not be able to answer this, but a forecast for contours, you're talking about increasing, decreasing, do you have a personal idea, forecast, do you think it's going to grow or shrink in the next five to 10 years? Do you, can you even say?
I, I, it, it's not going to, it's not going to significantly shrink. I know that. It can't. And it, taking, and to account all of the operational increases, I think there will be areas where it, where it will expand.
Okay.
And I think there might be a couple of areas where it shrinks, but it will not look like the last Part 150 where it was this dramatic before and after.
Okay.
You know, it won't be like that because that was a special case, because we hadn't updated the boundary in 30 years. And, and this has been 10, and there hasn't been, other than the operational changes, there hasn't been dramatic changes. There's been, been some runway use changes, there's been some operational increases. So I, I think it, it will, it will expand in some areas.
Okay. I also have some AI noise modeling, comments or questions?
I'll do my best.
And, well, I guess no matter what we ask you or think, do you, does the port actually have any input on AI modeling for this Part 150 at all? I mean, we could ask you questions, but do you have, will the FAA take any of your input and apply it because they think it's reasonable?
Well, most, if not all of the data is coming from us.
Okay.
From our flight tracking system. We have the radar flight tracks of all aircraft in and out of the airport. We will supply a year's worth of those, and there are precise data points regarding altitudes and aircraft types and-
I'm not talking about hard data that you've already established that you're going to provide, but inputs on maybe type or collection, right? So, okay, so here's my question. Have they accounted for geography, temperature and weather, for example? Do they, because the sound is different if it's really, really cold or if it's cloudy? So is there kind of a computation for weather here?
Yes.
Okay.
Weather, weather factors are in the model.
Okay. And it wasn't exactly clear here, Councilmember Harris mentioned it really quick, how many noise monitors are inside of our current DNL contours right now?
Okay. I'm going to say, I feel like I'm on a quiz show here. It, it's, it's seven?
Okay, and it was-
Twenty-four.
So it was interesting that you said, well, do they take that data from the noise monitors or their own calculations, which seem to be in their self-interest? If they establish their calculations, they put their own monitors, attach them to their own testing, that's, instead of contracting it out or gathering it?
Yeah, sorry, um, yeah, well-
You see what I'm asking, right?
Yeah, but there, there are no monitors used at all for the development of the contour. The, I mentioned monitors that the FAA use to certify aircraft.
Okay.
That's when a, a brand-new aircraft type rolls out. A brand-new 737 MAX 10 that had, yet to be certified, would require the FAA to put microphones behind it and certify it for noise before it ever takes a passenger in the air. So that's, that's, that's the monitoring I'm talking about, the FAA. That's the only way the FAA uses noise monitors. They do not use monitors for assessing noise impacts on the community at all. Noise monitoring data is not used at all.
Is that counterintuitive to you?
Well, it's hard to assess in a, a large area encompassing many square miles with noise monitors. A noise monitor might give you a decent look at what the noise is at that exact location. A monitor, a modeling program gives you noise impacts for an entire area. You would need hundreds, maybe thousands of noise monitors to do what a modeling program does in that sense.
Okay. All right. That's all I had. Thank you so much. Okay, looks like no further questions, so thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having me, Peter. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a city manager recruitment update, and that will come from AJ Johnson Newton, our assistant manager.
Good evening, council, community staff. My name is AJ Johnson Newton, and I am the assistant city manager, and I'm here to provide a, a very brief city manager recruitment update. So I'm happy to announce that the council has identified their finalists, who are going to be invited to participate on an onsite interview. The city will publish additional information about these finalists once their attendance to the onsite interview is confirmed. The interview process is expected to take place within about the next three and a half weeks. There will be an opportunity for the community to meet the candidates and get to know their background, qualifications and vision for the city. At this event, we will be asking the community to provide feedback on the candidates for council's review and consideration. Once the logistics are finalized, I'll be back up at the podium next week, Thursday, to provide you guys an update. So at that, I will end a little bit on a cliffhanger, probably.
Any questions from the council? All right, great, thank you. That was really quick. Okay, next up, we have the police department community update with Chief Kui here.
Mayor, council, city manager and guest, Mark Kui here. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this update about your accredited and highly regarded department. Let's hold the questions till the end so we can zip right through this. So first of all, to start off, where are we getting our data? A number of places. Spillman is our case management system, so that is one source. Valley Communications is the regional dispatch center that dispatches local police and fire agencies in South County. And then Nibers, you've probably heard me talk about before, is our mechanism to report via the Uniform Crime Reports to FBI. I think the takeaway from this slide is, and this comes from ValleyCom, is that our calls for service have been increasing. You can see the far right, the box there by the traffic cone, the 2024 forecasted total is actually up a bit from the previous two years. And we do see a seasonal bump. I'm sure that our friends in Redondo and other, other places know that. Again, these are 911 calls only. So our crime index, I think this was mentioned previously, some of this data came up at our public safety and emergency management meeting. But you can see that the trend line off to the right that corresponds to the color of the crime we're talking about, the trend line, the takeaway here for me is crimes against persons are trending up, crimes against property are trending up, crimes against society are holding steady or slightly trending up, and community caretaking calls are trending down. And I just put this slide in here to show you what the face page looks like. If you wanted to find this, this is a summary for our Nibers report, but there's multiple pages. All of the approximately 300 law enforcement agencies in the state of Washington report to WASPIC, which then creates a crime in Washington report. That report then goes to FBI, but this is what our report looks like. That's not everything, but that's the, the first page. Again, you can find this online. So this is another look, maybe portrayed a little bit differently, and you can see, as I mentioned, the crime forecast, we, we have been trending up, whereas the community caretaking portion of that, of our work, has been trending actually down a little bit. And I'm sure you're thinking, okay, what is community caretaking? Well, it's a bunch of things. It includes missing persons, for example, it's not a crime to be a missing person. We get a lot of missing person calls in this city. Mental health-related calls, it's not a crime. Assisting South King Fire, that we, we assist South King Fire quite a bit. Recovering stolen vehicles, recovering stolen property, suicidal subjects, that's what is in that community caretaking category. So this is actually, this surprised me on how well we do on responding to calls. I think that our friends at South King Fire would be a little bit jealous. So we have four districts in our city. What this tells me is that we get there really fast, we get there safely. You can see the priority levels of calls. Priority four is a follow-up. Follow-up can be a citizen calling back. It may go through the non-emergency line, but ValleyCom dispatches it out, out, out to us that citizen wants us to come back because they've got video of some incident or they have additional information. But you can see that those response times are very, very good, actually, and they've actually been trending down. So now some, I have to be fair about this because sometimes weather, you know, so you can't take all the credit. If we have a bad winter, well, you can imagine, or if there's some other, you know, construction, ton of construction, that can create a, a change, especially when the, the numbers are that, that close. So I know this one generates a lot of interest. I think the mayor asked some time ago, where are we at with staffing? Can we fill positions? Are we going to fill positions? It's talk of the nation, right? Talk of the state. And so short answer is, on the 16th of August, we'll be fully staffed. However, comma, what does that mean? Well, that right there tells you that when you do the math, there's eight people that are not out serving the community. They're in various stages. FTO is field training officer, so there's eight just in the commission portion of the department that are not out, in fact, serving. Reminder that Des Moines Police Department has 1.05 officers per thousand. The state average is 1.29 per thousand. Washington ranks 51st in the nation, that's including DC for officers per thousand. That's total officers. All agencies report this data yearly. That, that's, you know, it's very solid data in my mind. The other thing that is not reflected in this is we have four officers that are military reservists, and of course, if somebody is on sick leave, injured, vacation, and if any of you or anybody in the audience has managed a 24/7/365 operation, you realize that that's 24/7/365, and it's, looks like a lot of people, and they'll tell you, divide it up, multiple shifts. And so there's that. Question is often asked, well, why not use some overtime? Why not fill the holes with overtime? We do. We've spent about $240,000 year-to-date on overtime. Overtime's not a replacement for staff. Also, to me, it runs counter to wellness. So if you want people to be well, you want them to provide good service, I just know when I'm doing a project at home, if I'm tired, the quality goes down. So overtime, yes, you can use it to some extent on a limited basis, but it is not a replacement for staff. Traffic is often asked by community members, where are we at on traffic? Why don't you write more tickets? This does not include citations issued by automatic, or automated traffic cameras. There are six locations where we've got red light or speed cams, but you can see that there are traffic citations being issued. Not a lot. We don't currently have a full-time traffic officer. We have over probably the last, well, at least five years, well, 10 years, we've had one or two that are designated full-time traffic officers. So this work, what this is, is as time permits, when officers have time, they conduct traffic stops. And some of this is data that is actually from emphasis patrols, which are funded by the Traffic Safety Commission, which is passing through state and federal funds. So switching to more, most recent success, just to give everybody an update on what has been happening at the police department. Very proud of a couple of our sergeants, Sergeant Doug Webel and Sergeant, Sergeant Isaac Helgren, came up with the idea, let's do a warrant roundup. And so this is one day's work, actually, and they made the poster, sent it to local agencies, and you can see we had 23 arrests of, for one day. You can see that we made the most arrests as a department, 13, and the warrants came from those agencies listed on the left side. So, but there's a lot of warrants out there, warrants in the system. Back in the glory days, there were a lot more warrant roundups, but there are a lot of people on any given day with various bench warrants. The bench warrants that we, or the warrants that we picked up range from burglary, robbery, sex offenders, et cetera. And then a few other things, just to share on what has been happening at PD in the last month or two. We have spent a significant amount of time, you may remember this case, the La Familia triple murder case. You know, I bring this up because people think once the case gets to court that it's done, but in reality, a huge amount of time was spent on follow-up with five officers and detectives testifying. One detective was detailed to the prosecutor, which often happens. So for several weeks, you have a detective sitting there with the prosecutor at their direction, at the table during the whole course of the trial. So this case generated a lot of local and national news interest. And this was another case, this was an older case, but it came to trial here this, just in the last couple of months, with a confession, and this was actually the second time this individual was caught with assistance from Washington's Most Wanted and with video evidence. So this case resulted in a 23-year sentence, as you can- So this case resulted in a 23-year sentence, as you can see. We posted this on our Facebook page, but I wanted to bring it up. Certainly, fentanyl is in the news a lot, and here is no difference. We, in this case, do not have a suspect. This was a 911 call about a suspicious circumstance. The officer went out, found these drugs. This was in the area of 263rd and Woodmont, in a wooded area. And without a suspect, we don't take the risk, nor does Crime Lab of even analyzing it. So it's thousands of dollars street value. And unlike most prices, drug prices have actually come down since about $3 a pill street, street value for the fentanyl. Interestingly, King County officials say there have been, there were 1,333, sorry, 1,338 overdose deaths in 2023, and 1,087 were due to fentanyl. So far this year, King County's had 433 overdose deaths. So we, and we respond to overdose deaths in the, in the city all the time. And then I wanted to end with questions, but also just a plug for National Night Out, which I know there's one residence, I'll, I'll be out on August 6th, is my favorite barbecue to go to, but they're, they're around the city, there's a bunch of them, we track them. This year, our community service officer did something different, and we set something up. I know the mayor was up there, I think Councilmember Harris and others stopped by up at Underwood Park. So we sort of had a kickoff event, but there are a lot of events coming up. And, and the idea was that we would try to be at the one, and as you can see from the call load and other work that we're doing, we may not make many of the other ones. So, but we try. And with that, if you have any questions or questions.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah, there's a situation, maybe a month ago, that involved the flock cameras and a stolen car, and a local person from C-TAC that you got a little feedback on. Can you tell us that story?
Yes, and so in this case, our, a person had their car stolen, and then it was recovered in C-TAC. I should have, could have included that story because unfortunately, C-TAC PD did not remove the stolen from the system. So the rightful owner is happy driving his own car, thinking, hey, things are great, I'm coming back through, I'm coming into Des Moines. And next thing, gets lit up by our officers and taken out at gunpoint and handcuffed. And fortunately, number one, did everything he should do, because you can, and you can see the criticality of everything going right, but more importantly, was very complimentary about our officers arresting him. Took pictures, put it on his own, so it's all up, you know, he put the, the stuff up and allowed us to put it up, and then emailed a thank you. So as Councilmember Steinmetz points out, this, this is worth telling because it's an indicator of the professionalism of the officers and just how we operate, and the criticality of our records section. So our records and support staff in other departments, their job is so important. You can't make a mistake, you can't be late, you can't take hours to do something that needs to be done right away. So thank you for reminding me to retell that story.
It's also a good example of how the flock cameras work, and they enhance the value of what we, of what our officers can do, because it creates a focus. Here's something in the system. Now, it shouldn't have been in the system, but, you know, those cameras seem to work really well. I, I do have one other question for you on the traffic violations. You put in there, driving under the influence, negligent driving, and driving while license is suspended, which are all, at least initially misdemeanor or gross misdemeanor events, and, and everything else is, is a citation. Why do you count them in the same category?
So you, you point out, for most people, I think, don't understand that there are criminal traffic violations and there are infractions. Most traffic offenses are infractions, and you receive a notice of infraction. There are a handful of things that are crimes that you can get arrested for and go to jail. I think just under the umbrella of traffic, a person driving a car, most of the time, I mean, it was decriminalized, and I think in the 70s, but most of the time, it's an infraction. So if you're, you've got headphones on, or you forget to signal, or you're on your phone, playing on your phone as you're driving, those are all infractions. Most you're going to receive is, is an infraction. So we just put those there, but, you know, the negligent driving, DUI, suspended, reckless driving, racing, there are some that are traffic crimes that you can get hooked up and go to jail for.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Nutting?
I just have a comment. Being one of the council members that's been able to spend the most time with the staff and crew, most of our officers are very happy, and they do, all of them, understand the support that they get from council up here. And Chief, I think you're doing a great job in the interim, and I do appreciate our men and women in blue and what they do, and I think they appreciate us up here, too. So you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Chief, I want to talk about, you know, back with ARPA dollars, we added a GPS position. Can you kind of give us an assessment of that's been successful and the need for more, and maybe possibly one of the reasons the community care calls might have been reduced?
Yes, in fact, that is accurate. One of our positions funded through ARPA has been our community outreach person, Monica is her name, and I know the PSEM committee met her. And I do attribute that decline in community, some of the community caretaking numbers, a big part of it is her going out and having outreach. And so, you know, getting people, it reduces the call load, right? So this is, we're not getting the calls because she's out there and interacting, and she's fearless. She's not, she's not afraid to work, she's not afraid to get out there. This is a force multiplier for the officers, and it has had an impact. So, you know, that, that's an excellent point. I don't know that a lot of cities are doing that. We chose to do that, and it makes a difference, you know. If nothing else, sometimes if people aren't going to seek help, or change their ways, or whatever, just having somebody in their face all the time, it's like, you know, I just want to live in the woods, I guess I'll go somewhere else and live in the woods. So she's, she's there, you know, with a helping heart, but at the same time, if somebody doesn't want help, and we're getting called, and we're, we're trying to solve a problem, she's, she's definitely there to, you know, make that known.
My second question is, in the current vein of, of crime, and you were seeing the number of calls and increases, and you've been part of this, you've been part of the leadership over there. In your assessment, do we need more officers, and do we need to continue this GPS program and even expand it?
Yes, so to be at average for the state, we would have to hire 12 commission officers. Early on, about day two, I figured out that we were trying to cover a queen-size mattress with a twin-size sheet, and we do that all the time, all the time. It's very interesting to me that, you know, you want to match expectations, too. So I think, again, the department has done an excellent job, they do excellent work. But, you know, wellness, and there's other factors, there's other data points that aren't on here, too, about what happens with the workforce, too, if you drive them too harshly. So, you know, and again, I think any unbiased observer could look at the math, and I would encourage them to do so. A lot of this stuff is online, a lot of stuff is on WASPIC's website, that, for Crime in Washington, and they could form their own assessment as to whether it's the right amount of staffing for the number of calls, et cetera.
Thank you, Chief, and I think you're doing an excellent job as well. We really appreciated you covering the gap during this transition as chief, too.
Thank you.
Other questions? I do. My appreciation as well. Really love my brothers, sisters in blue, they're not my brothers and sisters in blue, I guess, but I feel like, thank you, part of the family here, protecting all of us, right? Could you comment on the, the value, this from a budgetary standpoint, the overtime versus having a regular staff person covering some of these emphasis patrols and things like that? And then also the stress of, what, what did somebody used to say was, you know, trying to do more with less? Could you comment on that?
Somebody needs to find that guy, just, I don't know, do something to him. Because that's, you know, that just doesn't make sense. That's, it's an old saying, obviously, and a lot of people, to me, got wore out. And it, it just doesn't work. If I give you five gallons of gas, you're not going to go as far as 10. You could coast, you can try. And so, back to the overtime issue, you know, overtime, again, you're, in certain places at certain times, it makes sense. Much of the time, it does not. You, you, again, back to the example that Councilmember Steinmetz brought up, you know, when the mistake is made, it's amplified. And if a mistake is made, and, and nobody cares, nobody goes back and says, well, that officer was working 16 and a half hours. Nobody goes, oh, well, let's give him a pass, or tries to find a, a reason to make an excuse for a human mistake. So there's that piece of it. But most importantly, I think that, you know, the, the, why would the rest of the state have operations set up a certain way, and we're well below where we should be? So that's, that's the other piece, where it's really what the community wants, what level of service they want, and, and so on. And, you know, it wasn't just the GPS, we call GPS Getting People Services Person that was funded through ARPA, as you know. We also funded a limited-term crime analyst, which put this presentation together, Patty Goesch, and does excellent work. Primary job is working on cases, so case support, and then officers as well. So again, I think that, you know, the, the, the data speaks for itself. I would encourage people to take a look at, at the minutia and see how we compare to other agencies. We definitely have had support from council for a long time, and I know that the officers really appreciate that. So I think every single one of you have made comments, either individually, or in a, you know, after a meeting, or at an event, or whatever, and so that's definitely appreciated and noticed. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Oxiger?
Yes, thank you, Chief. So I believe it was at the last meeting that it was stated that it costs about $215,000 per officer?
Yes, so our finance director, I think, quoted you that, and that would include, so the FTE costs are always sort of eye-popping to me, because you're including all of the costs, you know, Social Security and Medicare, Medicaid, all of the factors that go into that. Sometimes training is rolled into that. Training commitment for law enforcement has gone way up, as you know, from the initiative of years back. So training, that is a sort of a hidden number in that equation.
So then, just so that people have some perspective on this, in order to meet the state standards, we're looking at, you know, if we need 12 officers, you're looking at roughly $3 million more dollars we're going to need.
Again, if, it's not, it's state average. So again, I, keeping in mind, Washington's 51st in the nation for sworn officers per capita, but Des Moines being well below the state average, if we wanted to be at the state average, and some would argue, in fact, the number of chiefs, you could ask other chiefs out there around, whether we are considered a higher-than-average crime area, and they would tell you yes. So again, you can go, if people that love data and love going through, I think it's a 300-page document for Crime in Washington, so have fun going through the 300 pages, and you can go, you know what, actually, for per capita, we do have more crime. So to your, to your question, I think the short answer is yes.
Well, I, I just think it's important to understand what the, the magnitude of the issue is here. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, looks like no further questions. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, that, that ends our segment on emerging issues. We're going to move on to the second discussion item, preliminary discussion of our legislative agenda. And I'm going to introduce Anthony Hemsted. And what our legislative priorities and legislative agenda means is that these are going to be the things that we will go to our legislature to ask for, our representatives in Olympia. Thank you. Take it away, Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor Buxton. As mentioned, my name is Anthony Hemsted, I'm the city's contract lobbyist, and have been for quite a few years now. Last year, we discussed starting this process much earlier than we have in, in recent years. And so that's why I'm back here today in August, so we can start looking at the issues that we see on the horizon, and get your feedback on what you as counselors would like to see in this upcoming year's legislative agenda. I'm cognizant of the fact that you do have five different presentations you're, you're listening to today, so I will try to go through mine very quickly, and, and then we can get into whatever you would like to discuss during discussion. There we go. Okay, tonight, we'll look at what's happening right now in our current legislative biennium, look at the overview of the environment, and then looking forward into 2025, and then talk about some opportunities that, that we think could be logical for potentially putting on the legislative agenda. Okay, briefly, looking backwards, it's been a very good biennium for the city of Des Moines legislatively. We received five different earmarks in different budgets, about $6 million, or a little under that total, in both transportation and in the capital budgets. And policy-wise, it's also been a quite successful biennium with several public safety and airport-related bills that have been passed. And so we, we hope to build on those in the coming biennium. At the federal level, as you likely know, we, we do have one very important thing that is in the current proposed budget at the House of Representatives level back in Washington DC, and that is a, a $2.5 million community funding request, or what used to be called earmark. And we are in as good a position as we could ask to be right now with that, but there is a, a major question on what is going to happen on the macro level with that budget. So we, we are, we are hoping that gets passed, but there are several different scenarios where this entire budget might be blown up, and, and not acted on, and they might start over again next year with new rules. And it, it did take quite a bit of scrambling for the city of Des Moines to get into this budget, and we'd like to thank Tim George and Nicole, of course, Nicole just walked out, but, but we, we literally had about 24 hours to turn around from the time that, that Congress came up with new rules, because they're coming up with new rules every year with, and so we weren't even sure if we were going to qualify. We figured we could, put together this, this project, put it in, and we made it into the shortlist. And, and so, yeah, appreciate Tim's and Nicole's and other, other team members' work on, on getting that done. So we will be looking at that very closely as it goes, goes forward, because of course, it is $2.5 million, so that's, it's a big deal. Other things of note, with the Fed's FAA reauthorization did pass, and Tracy and Matt and myself went back to DC a year ago with the Regional Starts Group to, to and myself went back to DC a year ago with the Regional Starts Group to lobby on that. Most of, of the things that we were lobbying on did get through. There were several notable, notable items that did not make it in, and those are in freestanding, separate legislation. Unfortunately, there's really no separate standalone legislation that is moving in DC, and, and we can't expect that. So, so the, the real hope was to have everything rolled up into FAA, because FAA reauthorization had to pass. Standalone legislation in the dysfunction that is DC right now, it's, it's rare that a, an individual bill addressing an individual issue does get passed. Things have to get rolled into something like FAA or budget bill. And so, but we, we will continue to work closely with Adam Smith and Congressman Larson, who, who's a very, on a very key committee on that, and of course, our senators on, on that going forward. Because that impacts noise, pollution, a variety of other issues of, of huge importance to citizens in Des Moines. Looking forward, no crystal ball. We, we will revisit all of this in November, because there are too many different scenarios on, on what, what could be in DC and, and what that means for, for Des Moines going forward. We expect very little to happen in DC between now, especially the election. After the election, there could be a very, very active lame-duck period, and, and we're hoping the budget passes with our $2.5 million in it during that time. But there's only 13 budget days, 13 days that they will be in session between now and the end of their fiscal year, and, and they're not going to, all the scenarios are not good as far as, as, as passing their budget before the budget expires. Of course, the city of Des Moines, we couldn't do that, but, but the, the feds will likely pass a continuing resolution for a few weeks and, and give us a chance to, to pass the overall one. So, and in 2025, again, we will reassess if it makes sense to go after new earmarks, because there will be a, a different power structure back in DC at the time. Likely, there will be another, could be a very different set of rules, so we'll have to determine if, if we can compete next year. Again, the, the rules turned out to be very good for cities this year, the year before, it was almost impossible, so it changes year to year, and we will be monitoring that closely. The policy outlook here, looking forward, lots and lots of change is going to be happening between now and January. Again, we've got four open seats on a statewide basis. All House seats in the legislature are up for election here in November, and half the Senate seats. We are going to be impacted considerably with Karen Kaiser's imminent and announced retirement, and Karen, Senator Kaiser is retiring in, in the middle of, of her session, of her term. And so, that will not be decided in November. It will be decided in December or January, because she, she will be stepping down in, in December, and the 33rd District Democratic PCOs will be picking three candidates to, and referring that to the King County Council, and the King County Council will pick from those three. There's a reasonable chance that one of those three might be one of our sitting House members, and so then, that same, same thing would happen to fill that House seat. So, so, fair chance we will only have one new face representing Des Moines in the legislature, but, but we will, there's a fair chance we could have a familiar face in a new position as well. So, there'll be lots, lots of change on that come January. We are heading into a, a long session. It'll be 105 days this year, starting January 13th. It is the first year of a biennial budget, and so, the first year is the better year to make bigger budget requests. That being said, we are looking at what is likely going to be a tighter budget than the legislature has been dealing with in past years. COVID response dollars are no longer there. Economic forecast after economic forecast in the last few years, Washington State has been exceeding expectations, usually considerably, in the budgets. And, and so then, when it comes around to budget writing, there is an extra billion or two that hadn't been expected, and, and that's, and that's a great position to be in. It will no, there's a fair chance that that is not going to be the case this coming year. The past, the most recent budget forecast that just came out a, a couple of weeks ago, it was a $500 million shortfall, so first time that's happened in years. And depending on what happens in November with two of the initiatives, it could be a, a loss of about $6 billion in the coming years, or about $6 billion less coming into state coffers. And so, if those initiatives pass, it will be a, a tight or much tighter budget situation in, in Olympia overall. Also, transportation on its own is looking at, at about a $2 billion shortfall, and, and that's a shortfall on projects they've already approved, and, and so that's, that's difficult. Des Moines is fortunate in that we were able to get the $3.5 million that was allocated for Des Moines into this biennium. And so, we, other, other projects that had been approved in that 20-year plan, they may be pushed out years and years. We should be fine. So, it is, as long as we're able to spend that in this biennium, that, that will be good. Okay, but there will be opportunities, because, because with that major shortfall in transportation, the legislature will, will almost surely have to come in with a new transportation package. And whenever there is new revenue being discussed and billions having to be raised, there can be opportunities for, for putting new things in there. Not big, but, but something, something small on, on a, just, just a few million dollars type, but opportunities, but again, it, it, it will be a, a more difficult environment than it has been in the past. Des Moines has a challenging budget, but we are not alone. Almost every local government is looking at a, at a much tougher budget environment locally than they have been in, in recent years. And because of that, there will be a variety of local option taxes and other revenue options that will be being discussed down in Olympia. And while I wouldn't, Des Moines will not be in a position to be the leader, the group that is pushing this, but we may want to be assisting on some of those, because if, if those can pass, obviously, it can help Des Moines' budget going forward. Thinking about a few specific things to look at for, for Des Moines here in, in the next session. We have been successful at getting two separate earmarks for Redondo in past years, and that totals about $1.9 million. And the, the hope had been that we'd, we'd be spending that right now and building, but, but as, as you've, you've heard in the past, the, I, the project bids came in so, so high that, that we, we aren't actually able to, to rebuild the Redondo fishing pier. So, and one of those allocations came in the past biennium, so we will have to ask for money to be reallocated, so we, we can use it in the next biennium. And we're going to have to ask for, for more money, very likely, as well. So, in, in working with your Public Works Department and, and interim city manager, Tim George, we will work at coming up with what, what that, that difference is, how, how much we, we need to be looking for in, in, in order to, to move that project forward. Also, I believe Peter Phillips was, was here a, a few weeks ago and talking about discussions with King County Metro and the possibility of working with them in, in getting an electric or other passenger ferry that, that could call at Des Moines, connecting either with Seattle and/or Vashon Island. And, and we know the people on, on Vashon Island are very interested in, in coming to, to, to Des Moines on a, on a foot ferry or passenger ferry. We wouldn't be the lead on this, but it likely wouldn't move forward unless we were very, very active on it. And, and so, this is something that it would be, be good for you to be thinking about, because if we do want to go forward, there, there will be some, some spade work in building this coalition to be able to, to really push on this. Our chances of success on this will go up, very much so, if, if the Climate Commitment Act is not repealed. If it's repealed, we can still give it a shot, but having that extra few billion will make a big difference, and especially when, when those funds would, could be naturally spent, especially for something like an electric ferry. I mentioned the potential structural spending or funding options out there. Here's a few of them that, that are listed out. Councilmanic sales tax to support local public safety, that was floated last year. It, it didn't go very far. It is certainly coming back again this year. There have been talks about a new state grant for, to help with public safety recruitment and retention, and almost certainly, in the governor's race here in the coming weeks, we're going to hear much more about that, with, very likely, it will be Ferguson and Reichert as the top two. Both of them have, have said that public safety is going to be their top priority, and, and there's talk about a $100 million new program. Of course, how they're going to fund that hasn't been discussed, but, but one area of growth from, from the state next year will almost certainly be public safety. So, so that, that will be a good thing for us to be, be looking towards. Again, I was in a AWC meeting just the other day, talking about the 1% property tax cap. There's going to be a concerted push to try to push that up or, or to remove that limitation for local governments, because especially with the high, or what has been a high inflation environment in recent years, 1% is just causing, causing chaos in, in local budgets, as, as you know. Also, increasing the option for higher REITs for, a higher REIT percentage, probably doubling the REIT percentage for local governments, although that would be earmarked specifically for, for housing projects, not general fund, but, but housing funds. And with the ongoing demise of the gas tax as a, as a reliable way to, to fund transportation, and in the last state transportation package, they, they didn't increase what was being shared with the local, with local governments, and, and so, so we're, we're making do with, with diminishing resource to, to help fund local, local projects. There's talk of either a statewide or allowing a local option for a retail delivery fee for e-commerce. So, if you order something from Amazon, it might be an, an extra 30 cents or 50 cents, the equivalent of a, of a stamp type of thing. Currently, it's been done in two states, and it's been, been quite successful in, in generating funds for local governments. So, that likely will be an option, but, but that, that's in the discussion stage right now at the state level. But it'd be at the state level, but available to the locals. On policy issues where we, we may want to, or it would make sense for us to be very active on, of, of course, the airport. While we were very successful last year in working with Senator Kaiser and Representative Orwell and others in, in passing really landmark legislation, we understand that that has not rolled out as exactly how it was hoped or anticipated, so there, there may need to be follow-up legislation on that. And, and I think some of us will be, be having meetings in, in the coming weeks with our legislators and, and others on determining how and in what form that, that should be going forward. Also, with the new COG being formed that was supposed to be looking at the future of aviation and the second airport, Governor Inslee surprised the sponsors and, and many others when he, when he vetoed most of the, of the guts of the bill and his budget and what the group is supposed to be doing. So, it's, it's a shell of what the legislation is right now. They had their first meeting, but then I'm going to have half the, half the seats filled, because partly, people are, are not saying, yes, I want to be on this committee that doesn't So, in any case, it may make sense to go back and try to backfill the reason for COG, give it a budget and, and give it more of a purpose, even though that, that is an extremely long-term attempt to address the need for a second airport, and, and that it will take decades, decades, unfortunately. But again, if we don't start, it's, it's, we'll just push it out further and further, unfortunately.
What is COG?
Oh, I, the Citizen Aviation Work Group. Commercial Aviation Work Group, thank you. And, and this, this is the replacement of CAC, the Commercial Aviation, J.C., Councilmember Harris, Coordinating Commission, there we go, yes. So, the CACC, which, which did have a very, very clear mandate, and it moved forward enough until it became too controversial and it was stopped, and, and COG came in its place, so. Again, we want to be looking at historic preservation opportunities if we're in such, such a situation that we can move on that. And on public safety, as mentioned, local option, sales tax might be very good to look at. We had, through the Public Safety Committee, there had been a desire to look at aftermarket muffler issues and, and banning the sale of those across the state, across the state. That has been a difficult issue to get traction on. There's a, a lot of pushback. If the Public Safety Committee does want to add that to the legislative agenda again this year, I would like to come and maybe speak with the Public Safety Committee and, maybe the police force as well, and, and we can, we can brainstorm on things that would have to happen in order to make it more likely that, that the effort could, could get some traction. We have been very successful on certain issues in the past, working with Councilman Mahoney in the past on catalytic converter theft. Des Moines was, was one of the ma, major drivers in, in getting that legislation passed. And I, but the macro environment isn't, isn't right for aftermarket mufflers like it was for catalytic converters a few years ago. Again, not saying we can't try, but it, it will be a heavy lift, just getting that out there to, for everyone. Okay, and again, a great picture of, of city of Des Moines and, and regional partners with the aviation legislation that was passed into law last. that was passed into law last session. But you may have questions or comments?
Any questions or comments right now? Okay, great presentation. It's a good springboard for jumping off. We're going to have a few more of these conversations before we nail it down, so this puts everything out on the table for us. Anthony, thank you.
I don't think I've ever been here, and there hasn't been, you know, four, or five, or 10, or 20 questions.
You did a great job, though, very thorough.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Okay. Next up is item number three, is the Levy-Lidliff Pro-Con Committees, and I'm going to pass that over to city manager Tim George to introduce this to for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is just kind of a technical piece that we had to put on the agenda tonight because we need to appoint our pro and con committee like we previously did, but the deadline is August 6th. So this was our last meeting before that date. We can pass motions at study sessions. That question sometimes comes up. According to our rules, we can't pass resolutions or ordinances. We can approve contracts. We can pass motions, appointing people to committees and all that. These are the same two individuals that the city previously approved. I think they've both done a good job. Our recommendation is to make the motion and reappoint them for the next, for the November ballot.
Any questions? Councilmember Nutting?
No, I just have a motion to make.
Oh, okay. Before the motion, any questions for city manager? All right, we have a motion. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to confirm the mayoral appointment of Bettina Carey to the pro committee and the appointment of Susan White to the con committee for November 5th, 2024, public safety Levy-Lidliff ballot proposition.
I have a second. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the second. Any discussion? Okay, take it to the vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like it's 7-0. Thank you. All right, moving forward. The council is to executive session. So the council will now dismiss to executive session to discuss labor negotiations under RCW 42.30.1404A. The meeting is expected to last for 15 minutes, and no further action will be taken by the council after the session.